Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers, if you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the front counter near the doorway and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. If you are participating via Zoom, the city clerk will ask at the appropriate time if you would like to speak. And so at this time, the city clerk will have a Zoom broadcasting announcement for us.
Thank you, Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of April 13th is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 863-5086, 5546, and enter password number 371215. You will be placed in the waiting room and muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace for April 13th, 2021. Tonight, we will have an invocation offered by Pastor Hoswe Zapata of Centerpoint Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by San Bernardino County Lieutenant, excuse me, San Bernardino County Sheriff Lieutenant Brian Lane. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we thank you, Lord, for your goodness and for your grace. Lord, we thank you for your constant faithfulness, Lord, throughout our lives, Lord, in every aspect of our lives. Lord, as this meeting comes to order, God, I just pray that you would have your hand over each and every soul who is here this evening, God. We thank you for the leadership here this evening, God. I pray for each and every soul who is going to speak, Lord, the decisions that will be made, conversations that will be had, God, that each and every one would be one that honors and glorifies you, Lord, that every thought would be taken captive by you, God, that every word that is spoken would be spoken for your glory, Lord, every decision that is made would be one that honors and glorifies you. We love you, Lord, and once again, we thank you for your constant provision and faithfulness. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hesse.
Here.
Mayor McInnes.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there any need to reorder, add to, or remove items from the agenda at this time?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll move to special presentations. We have three tonight. We have two proclamations, and we'll have a presentation. We'll begin first tonight with our proclamation for the DMV Donate Life California Month, and we have Susan Van Kampen via Zoom. So I will read the proclamation, and I will give Ms. Van Kampen an opportunity to talk about Donate Life. City of Grand Terrace Proclamation: Donate Life California. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, whereas more than 114,000 individuals nationwide and more than 23,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 22 people die each day waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, whereas approximately 98 organ transplants take place every day in the United States, that is more than 36,000 people who begin new lives each year. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood. Whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Whereas over 17 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor are honored. Whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy McInnes, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members proclaim the month of April 2021 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Grand Terrace, and encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org or www.donvedaCalifornia.org. Presented this 13th day of April 2021, and it's signed by me and all of my council colleagues. We will make sure that this proclamation gets to Ms. Van Kampen. If you would like to say a few words about your organization, please do. We're having some technical difficulties. My apologies.
No problem.
All right. If you would try again, please.
Do you want me to start from the beginning?
Oh, that is so much better. We couldn't hear you before. Would you please start from the beginning? Thank you so much.
No problem. My name is Susan Van Kampen. I'm an ambassador for One Legacy, and I'm a living donor. And I wanted to tell you my story. PKD, I never thought three simple initials would change my life in so many ways. My father was the first one we know in our family to receive the diagnosis of polycystic kidney disease. He ended up on dialysis in his 60s, 20 years later in life than my three siblings who inherited the same genetic disorder. They've all been fortunate to have received transplants from living donors like myself, but most of those in need of kidney transplants are not so lucky. Many will die on the waiting list as there are not enough organs to go around. Help others continue to exist by becoming an eye, organ, and tissue donor. Thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you so much for your time and attention to this very important issue, and thank you for being here tonight and sharing your story.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our second proclamation tonight is for Child Abuse Awareness Month, and Councilmember Robles will be reading that proclamation. We have Jen Key Patel from the Children's Network Officer, who, excuse me, she's the Children's Network Officer, and she is here via Zoom to accept this proclamation.
Whereas all children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides to be free from harm and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met, state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the purpose of promoting community involvement in the prevention of child abuse, and whereas more than 32,000 children in San Bernardino County were referred to Children and Family Services for suspected child abuse and neglect in 2020, and whereas the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study conducted by Doctors Vincent Felidi and Robert F. Anda demonstrates long-term health, social, and economic risks that result from childhood trauma, and whereas as the prevention of child abuse requires vigorous solutions, energy, strength, determination, and commitment from concerned citizens and the entire community, the County of San Bernardino provides services and professionals in the field of child abuse who are dedicated, compassionate, and skilled in the prevention of child abuse, and whereas the blue ribbon, excuse me, whereas with the blue ribbon as the international symbol for child abuse prevention, the San Bernardino County Children's Network, in partnership with San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, the member agencies of the San Bernardino County's Children Policy Council and Child Abuse Prevention Committee have planned a blue ribbon media campaign. The 22nd Annual Shine Alight on Child Abuse Awards breakfast during the month of April to increase awareness of child abuse. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with her fellow council members, proclaim this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Grand Terrace, and encourages citizens, organizations, schools, nonprofit businesses, and other entities in the community to engage in activities and events that assist in the effort to prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Ms. Patel, did you have a few words you'd like to share with us tonight?
Certainly. Thank you so much, Mayor, and city council members. I appreciate you allowing us a moment to talk about Child Abuse Prevention Month. My name is John Key Patel, and I am the Children's Network Officer at Children's Network in San Bernardino County. As I mentioned before, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and especially now, in this past year, especially after the pandemic, I think it's more important now than ever to talk about child abuse prevention. What we found was because the schools closed, many of our mandated reporters weren't able to have their eyes on our children, especially in the distance learning environment. And what we actually found was that the number of referrals actually dropped during the height of the pandemic last year around this time, and which meant that a lot of our children who were experiencing abuse neglect weren't being able to be referred to Children and Family Services. And so we realize that this pandemic has created a lot of isolation for our family, and what we found is because of the financial hardships, job instability, sometimes housing instability, all those stressors, and now you add on the fact that many of us have to take care of our children, who are also distance learning, and all those stressors have been found to increase the likelihood that child abuse is happening. And so we use this month every year, but I think, again, I think this year is much more important, to have our community be the eyes and ears. So when you're out and about, or if you have family, or if you have neighbors, and, you know, your gut instinct is saying something, feel free to dial 211. It's easy as that, and all you have to do is have that suspicion, because sometimes that little suspicion is what's needed to make sure our families are safe. And oftentimes, we can prevent child abuse from happening by making sure that, making those calls, we can make sure our families get the resources that they need. So again, I appreciate the mayor, I appreciate our city council members allowing me an opportunity to raise the awareness around this important topic this month, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for shining a light on this important topic and being here tonight to share important information with us.
Thank you.
And our third presentation tonight will be a Community Risk Reduction Application presentation, and it will be given by our Fire Marshal and Deputy Fire Warden. So we have Fire Marshal Mike Horton and Deputy Fire Marshal Adam Panos of the San Bernardino County Fire Department.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, city council members, members of the community, thank you very much. My name is Mike Horton. I'm the Fire Marshal and Deputy Fire Warden for San Bernardino County Fire Department, and I'm here on behalf of my fire chief, your fire chief, Dan Muncie, up here, our Deputy Chief of Administration, Bertral Washington, over there, our Assistant Chief, Dan Mejia, who's your proud fire chief, and of course, the team that we put together for this presentation. As you know, community risk reduction is a very important aspect of what we do, a data-driven information system that we collect to identify fire problems within our communities and then address those. Well, I'm sure you're going to be proud of the team that we've assembled tonight that's going to present on those applications. So I'm here to introduce my deputy fire marshal, Adam Panos.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, council, just to continue a little bit more on the subject of community risk reduction, if you would have the next slide, please. So of course, this might be an unfamiliar term, or it may not be, but really, it involves identifying the risks by doing basically an assessment, determining which risks or emergencies are most likely to occur, and then what the impact of those emergencies are, and then to allocate our resources and deploy our resources in order to address those severe risks. So it's more than just responding to fires and emergencies or doing inspections and then going home. It's figuring out where we can get the biggest bang for our buck, basically. And so as Chief Horton mentioned, it's data-driven, so we collect this data, and then we input it into different software programs. We use GIS, which I'll talk about in just a second, and then we also have public education and outreach programs, which, again, all of those programs together, all those approaches will reduce the risks. So next slide, please. And just a little bit more about how we collect data. We're using GIS a lot more, Graphic Information Systems. We use an ESRI product, the various ESRI products, Collector, Survey 123, ArcGIS, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that, oh, thank you, in just a little bit. But it allows us to see not only what the hazards are, what the risks are, but where they are, and to pinpoint them on a map, where they're at in our county, not only just in the unincorporated areas, but also in our cities that we serve. It mentions there spatial analytics. That's something on the horizon for us. That's where we actually get to take a look at, you know, the complete totality of the data, and then forecast trends, maybe even human behavioral trends, arson fires, you know, and different things like that. So we're excited about that, really, the sky's the limit with this kind of technology. And so with that, next slide, please. Oh, that's what this is for. Sorry about that. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and segue that and introduce one of our Assistant Fire Marshals, Tom Strong, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the GIS and also how it's applied with fireworks enforcement. Tom?
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, Mrs. Mayor and council members. I'm going to talk to you this evening just real briefly about three of the current applications that we're using. We're currently using the Damage Assessment App, which actually won the 2020 NACO Award. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Vacant Buildings App, and then I'm also going to touch on the Illegal Fireworks Reporter, which was just submitted as a NACO, hopefully recipient for this year. We'll see what happens. The Damage Assessment App is what we do with that is when we have large fires, civil unrest, floods, we go out into the field, and now everything, instead of being on paper and pen and trying to figure out our locations based off of where we think we are and all, we now actually have all of this on the iPads. We use the authoritative parcel data from the county's assessor's office. We can use it either on our iPads or any mobile device, including our cell phones. The data is recorded live and updated real-time. As you can see down below, that information is what our command post, as well as our chief officers, are able to see, and as the teams are out in the field and reporting that damage, that damage is reported live back to those locations in the ICPs. The program has been adopted to include, as I mentioned, the civil unrest that we recently had. The way that it's working so far, and we've been very lucky, is any time that we need to update and add a new type of a, I'm sorry, any time that we need to add a new type of damage assessment, we're able to go in and make those changes immediately. And then we also share all of this information with all of our cooperating agencies and all as well. The next one is the Vacant Building Reporter App. We use that to combat blight. The data can be easily shared with our cooperator agencies, and it tracks the high crime and vandalism areas used by homeless and illegal activities. This app is used by all of the officers out in the field, so as they're driving through your cities that we have responsibility for, they're able to actually go right to their iPad, pinpoint their location via the satellite map that they have in their vehicles on the iPads. They go through and do a simple survey, and all of that information, including pictures, is then put into the system. We can then share that with such as your city, your code enforcement, any of the county entities that would be interested in that information as well. The hot topic one right now is the fireworks, of course. So on June 17th of last year, we put our online illegal fireworks reporting system online. That system was open to the public. It's a simple online survey that allows citizens the opportunity to report the illegal use and illegal cells of fireworks 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and you have the option to stay anonymous, or you can actually put in your information as far as name, phone number, and an email address. If you do that, you'll get an email back from the fire marshal thanking you for doing that submittal as well. The data collected was then used for fireworks patrols conducted by the office of the fire marshal to concentrate patrol efforts in those areas that were receiving the highest areas of reports. This is the public view, so if you go online and want to report the illegal fireworks, you're able to do so, and then you're also able to see on the map the areas that we are receiving the highest concentration of fireworks being reported. With that particular map, you're not able to zero in as much as we are to see actual addresses and all. This is more of a heat map that just gives you kind of the general area, the highest area of reports are being submitted from. This is the Field Officer Dashboard. This is what the officers in the field are seeing. It's live update, so as you or members of the public are reporting these illegal fireworks, that is then being transferred over to this map, and the officers in the field, if we're out doing fireworks patrols, we are able to see where those areas are. From the vehicles on the iPads, we're able to then pull all of that information, including the address, the type of fireworks, be it aerials, illegal stuff on the ground, or reported You're also able to report the illegal cells. With the illegal cells, last year, we had two that actually were used to have actual convictions. The report, this one here, was information that we received and shared with the city of Fontana. It was then sent to our investigations unit, who passed the information on to Fontana PD. One of the complaints received also ended in two people receiving citations and a large quantity of illegal fireworks being seized. As you can see, those photos that are on there were actually submitted on the online reporter, and from that point, we then turned all that information over to the investigative And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Adam Panos. Adam?
So as we can see here, as Tom said, fireworks, huge, huge problem. Last year, when we launched the app, 2,000, over 2,000 complaints received, 1,268 in our jurisdiction, and many outside the jurisdiction as well. It did reduce 911 calls, which is good news for us and for everybody, so that was, that's really good, again, with community risk reduction, focusing our resources in those complaint areas. And we, of course, also shared with our neighboring agencies these reports. Let's see here. Oh, okay, I hit the wrong button. I'm so sorry. All right. Okay, I'll get this right here. Strain on resources due to illegal fireworks, just moving along here, like we said, you know, there's so much money and staffing that we spend, and we only put really a dent on the fireworks problem in the county. It's a statewide problem. And just so you can see the charts and graphs there, 2020 was one of the highest activity years that we've seen in a long time. So hopefully, with these tools, of course, that will make a difference. So moving along, we're going to get into how we use GIS with investigations, and I'll introduce our Assistant Fire Marshal and Arson Supervisor, Brian Headley. Be careful with that thing, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Brian Headley. I'm the Assistant Fire Marshal in charge of investigations for the county. Our squad is, our unit is made up of six investigators that cover the 19,000 miles, including your great city of Grand Terrace. We're all post-certified, post-qualified. We're all former suppression personnel and all trained in fire behavior. Among our basic responsibilities is the cause and origin of, you know, any fire that we get responded to. All our investigators are expert witnesses when it comes to civil and criminal matters, and we follow investigations from the beginning to the end. We have other responsibilities besides just fire, cause and origin. We also provide force protection for active shooter incidents for our paramedics, and we provide custody officer operations for our inmate fire crew. And our newest tool, as you see at the bottom there, is our new K-9 program that's coming onboard. Our officer will be back with the new dog in just a couple weeks. Her name is Kit. She's a chocolate lab, is 27 months old. Fireworks interdiction, as everyone has said, is a hot topic. So what we do is we go to the California-Nevada border. Last year, we went for seven days, Saturdays and Sundays in the month of June. We wrote 221 citations, generated that amount right there, $277,000 in fines, 45,000 pounds of fireworks are seized or confiscated, and that keeps whatever percentage that was coming from coming to your community. So it's a wonderful operation. We have other jurisdictions that participate with us that take some of the load off of our staffing, so it's a great, great operation that we do up there. We've been doing that operation up in the desert for well over 10 years now. So this is a, this is a great thing that we do. Things that we're going to talk about, we have in development. I know we talked about fireworks patrols. We need to talk about how we're going to cite these people. We have a program that we're developing for illegal marijuana sales and grow operations to keep our engine crews safer as they respond into illegal burns and fires and encounter these folks. We have created, Tom really has created a map that shows all those, and they're put in the CAD system. So before the engine crew even arrives on scene, they know that they're coming into something else, and they usually respond, one of us or the sheriff with them. Our arson map is another program that we're developing. So on the no-contact administrative citations, what we do is with that fireworks reporter, we respond into an area where we see heavy fireworks have been reported. Our officers used to have to get out of their car, encounter these people on a Fourth of July evening, which is not a fun thing to do. So now, we have the ability to pull up in front of a house that's using fireworks, go on your iPad, tap the map, it'll pinpoint you, it'll pre-fill all of the property owner information pulled from the PIM system in the county. The officer does a few more clicks and dropdowns, and believe me, Tom can explain this a lot better than I can, because I'm a user, I'm not a developer. So they don't even have to get out of their car, and they move on to the next one. It's being used in other jurisdictions in Los Angeles County, and so we're kind of mirroring that program. We're just waiting for the final approval from the city, I'm sorry, from the county council, and we expect that within the next week or two. Our arson mapping ability, it's the same Ezra program that Tom spoke about. Our arson mapping ability, it's the same Ezra program that Tom spoke about, and we can track all the fires that my investigators respond to. We track arson registrants, we track juvenile fire setters. Well, all with different colored dots on this map, and this is not a map that's available to the public, obviously. So that when we see a series of fires in a certain area, then we can move into that area, see if there's anyone registered in that area, a juvenile fire setter that we know of in that area, and we can, we can start to, you know, map those fires and create a case for that. Also, this program allows us to do digital field interviews, and it stores all that information in some part of this map, so that when any investigator goes back out to that location or in that area, they can pull up all those people that he talked to And that's it for me. I'll introduce Adam Panos for any questions for him.
Okay, Brian. As you can see, we're pretty passionate about our, our technology and the applications that we've developed, not to take up too much more of your time, but they're all data-driven applications that are used to address community risk assessment that we'll be conducting in the name of community risk reduction. One thing I, I need to mention is that we can't do this without the community. It takes the community input to neighbor helping neighbor, and when we get these reports, we will absolutely use the information at hand to make the best response that we can. With that said, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have, and one other statistic you might be interested in. Over the three-year period, we've issued over 700 citations, and we've seized over 161,000 pounds of dangerous and illegal fireworks that resulted in fine revenue, which goes back into the program, of $875,000, and that offsets our costs for the program. And all of those resources, we put together for every community we serve, including here in Grand Terrace.
Thank you so much for that report. I believe my colleagues have questions, so I'm going to go ahead and, and open it up to their questions, and, and if mine aren't answered by the time they're done, then I'll ask mine, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions of the fire marshal at this time. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Regarding these reporting apps that you're using, and I just wanted to say that this has been a great presentation. I've learned a lot, and I thank you very much for bringing it to us, and I hope we can use it to benefit the community this year much better. So my question is about, you know, the Vacant Building Reporter app. So the, the gentleman who is giving the briefing on that mentioned that the officers use this. Are those fire officers or police officers that use it?
Currently, the fire prevention officers that are doing annual inspections within your community, they'll be driving through your community if they notice a, an abandoned structure. If we have a report of an abandoned structure, we'll respond to fire prevention officer out there to take photographic details of it, plot it on our map, and make sure that we're monitoring that structure for further incident analysis. If we continue to have incidents, whether it's trespassing or fires in those buildings, we immediately work with your code enforcement to cite and do all of the notifications to that property owner to remediate that property up to and including, I just lost my train of thought, excuse me, up to and including demolishing that building. And we do that quite readily, we can do it quickly. We use your city council and county council to support the demolition of those buildings.
Okay, so, so either the fire officer would either randomly see it on a, doing a survey drive-through or get called out. Okay. The Field Officer's Dashboard that we saw up there on the screen says that it can give the, the officers the exact location. So how does it do that? How does it determine the exact location? Is it dependent on, on somebody calling in the dispatcher and saying, giving the location? Or does it triangulate it from sound or something?
There's actually two questions that you're asking. One is how can, when people report an illegal activity or use of fireworks, they can actually pin their own location, and they could be near or at the location they're reporting, or they can enter an address or an APN number. And when they do that, that pins exactly the, the address that we're concerned with. We don't take it lightly that the reports can be misaligned, so we validate that information with activity at that certain address and make sure before we make contact to those residents that we have some pretty significant data or information. But for the fire prevention officer, when they're doing their contactless citations, they're tracked, geo-tracked by their iPad or iPhone or whatever device they're using, and when they're in front of that property, it geopins their location automatically with the PIM's information download from the assessor's office.
My last question is, do they actually, would those gentlemen or those officers, ladies and gentlemen, they have to actually witness the fireworks going off to be able to issue the citation?
Yes. If they see the activity and they can pinpoint the responsible party or property owner, which is what we get through the PIMs, we will issue a citation on, for that illegal activity. As all of you are probably thinking, we get thousands of reports of illegal fireworks in the air. We can't deploy resources to every single fireworks in the air, but by the time we get there, it's, it's gone. So the ones that have more specific information or photographic evidence, those are the ones we concentrate and deploy our resources for.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. A couple of things, you know, I, I know, you know, you talked about, you know, a lot of resources being used to curtail this illegal firework activity. And then, of course, you know, our state's in a drought again, you know, we're tinderbox here every year. Do you, have you guys worked with the state representatives on somehow working with the local jurisdictions of the states that are selling illegal fireworks?
We absolutely have. We, we've been doing illegal fireworks interdiction and patrols for the last 16, 17 years since I've been with County Fire, and I'm sure they, they had programs before that. Most significantly, our interaction with the state would be with the state fire marshal in doing initially interdiction programs and your, more or less your DOI stop checkpoint type of operations. We've discontinued those because of some legal activities, but we do have strategic points throughout the county where we do make and work with CAL FIRE to make traffic stops and/or checkpoint observations. And when we see those dangerous or illegal fireworks that are, none are allowed within the county of San Bernardino, we immediately offer the site, well, we, if it rises to the occasion of a felony or misdemeanor, that is our, our first choice to present to that suspect, if you will. And if they opt for the administrative citation, it reduces their charges, does not appear on their criminal record, and we seize those fireworks and write the citation. The revenue is pumped back into the program. The fireworks are then surrendered to the state fire marshal for destruction.
Okay, what I was getting at is, working with the state, as far as working with the outlying states, Nevada, Arizona, who's selling illegal fireworks, has there been any cooperation with those other states, with, with our states, you know, to shut those businesses down or move them further away, or do something else, you know, prevent it?
No, it's unfortunate that in counties that border our state and our county, out of state, Nye County, as one, allow the sales of those types of user illegal fireworks we consider illegal. They provide them a permit to remove them from their county immediately because there's no use allowed in their county. It's kind of unusual. But, and, and then we end up dealing with it. We did attempt to work with the sheriff of Nye County in some surveillance operations and interdiction operations, and they were not favorable to that contact. So yes, sir, we did reach out in a limited capacity, but we weren't accepted very well.
Do you think in the future in the state of California that all fireworks, even safe and sane, will be illegal for sale here?
You know, the nonprofits really use the safe and sane sales to benefit their programs, and it's unfortunate that we couldn't find another way for them to do that. With significant actions or incidents, such as the most recent explosion in Ontario, those are the driving forces behind driving legislation towards making all fireworks illegal in the state. To take a position on that now, sir, I wouldn't be able to really predict that, but the, the option that the county fire marshal prefers, myself and my chief included, is zero fireworks within our county or within any area that has the drought conditions and the wildfire conditions that we do. Not only are these fires now a wildfire risk, but they're a risk within our county, our communities, your neighbors, our schools. They could be stored in semi-trucks or storage units or residential garages. And we're taking it very seriously and looking at those opportunities to pursue reports, to follow up and, and try to soften that impact.
Last question, what, I know you do citations, what are the, the minimum and maximum fine amount? And do they, if you have a legal firework, like in Ontario, and if you guys came across that, I don't know, in the state, do they confiscate property? Do they do a seize of the property, you know, the resident property or the cars?
I'll, I'll speak to the citations first. Our first and minimum citation for the possession, use, or sale of dangerous and illegal fireworks is $1,250. We are considering raising that amount and doing an amendment to raise it to a $2,500 first violation. They graduate now first, second, third violations up to $5,000 within a calendar year. As far as the possession and, and sale of illegal fireworks, there are limits that the fire code allows where that becomes, in the penal code, where that eventually becomes either a misdemeanor or a felony. And Brian, I, I think you might have those limits, those amounts. My chief investigator may be able to enlighten you on the amounts that we would then charge a felony or a misdemeanor.
Thanks.
Most of the time, if it comes over 100 pounds net weight, we start to go criminal on them instead of just the administrative citation.
Okay.
I have a couple of follow-up questions, more administrative than anything else. I love the interaction that, that community members can have online. I think that, that makes it a whole lot easier. If there is somebody that wanted to report by phone, is there an opportunity to do that instead of calling 911?
They absolutely can. They can contact the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District through our website, and there's a contact list there for either email or telephone numbers that they can call. We'll take those direct calls, and we will actually walk the reporter through the application if they have that ability to report. And if they don't, then we'll take a over-the-counter report and dispatch and enter it into our system ourself.
Okay. And how are you communicating the existence of this system? I know that there are a number of residents in Grand Terrace that are very concerned about the illegal fireworks, and I don't think that they've had an opportunity to hear about this reporting system.
Well, this is, one of the opportunities we've taken is coming through your city council, and hopefully that down trickle of information will get to the, the citizens. But also, last Thursday, we had a major press conference in the city of Fontana and all the major news channels, 2, 4, 5, 7, 11. We're all there, along with Telemundo and several other radio stations. And we did, in a pretty extensive press conference, all of our cooperators there, county fire agencies, the Sheriff's Department, Police Departments for Ontario, Rialto, Fontana, we're all there. And we offered all this information through, through that press conference that led them to our website. One thing that we haven't mentioned yet is our surrender dates. We've also offered 10 dates, and this weekend, we started with the voluntary fireworks surrender dates to try to incentivize folks to turn in dangerous or even safe and sane fireworks and get them out of our storage areas in our residences.
I think I saw one of those advertisements. All right, so there's some information that we could put on our city website and our channel, our local channel.
Absolutely, a link back to our fireworks reporter app, we can absolutely manage that for you, and we'll get that so your citizens can have direct access.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for being here and, and for your very comprehensive report. Chief Muncie.
Thank you, folks. My whole career, we've been surrounded by fireworks. I've ran, responded to many firework calls in this town where any fireworks are illegal. My whole career, I've been told this is a problem we cannot fix. What Mike didn't tell you, what, what our fire marshal didn't tell you, Mike Horton, is that this innovation that you see in this county with his team, you don't see anywhere else in the United States, and that we have many, many fire departments that are now reaching out to us, including LA City and LA County, saying, "How are you doing this?" He is taking one of the most complicated problems in the history of the fire service, and when I mean complicated, I mean on July 4th, turn on your scanner, you'll hear 400 responses for fires. You'll see, you'll hear so many fires, you'll hear the firefighters coming up saying, "We're out of vehicles, we cannot respond to all these fires." He's taking the most complicated risks that we have in this county, and his team is leading through the use of technology, and I'm very proud of him. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you to, to mitigate a number of these risks in our community.
And not to steal any more of your time, but thank you very much for having us, and we'd be happy to present to any community organization you'd like us to. But I'd also like to do a little shout-out for One Legacy. My son was an actual donor for that program. I got to meet his heart recipient, so I would encourage everybody to, you know, use that donor dot on your driver's license and support One Legacy. They are a tremendous organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Marshall Horton. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll move back to our agenda. We're on our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do we have any requests for removal of items at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of consent calendar.
I'll move, make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
Mayor Mcnambo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we have an opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak during this time?
Not under public comment.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment. We have no public hearings. We do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. We'll begin with item number seven on our agenda, which is Grand Terrace Special Events List for calendar year 2021. Mr. City Manager, G. Harold Duffy.
Good evening, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Over the last few years, the city council established an annual events calendar, and the events have included the hike on Blue Mountain, the country fair, art show, light-up Grand Terrace, music and movies in the park, trunk or treat, volunteer pickup, paint and plant, community cleanup day. We've had celebrations for Memorial Day and also Veterans Day. We've had our community day events, to name a few. As the council is aware, 2020 was a significant issue in all of our lives with COVID-19. And so after our Blue Mountain hike, all of our events in, in 2020 were canceled. However, in 2021, things are changing, and the first event that we were able to have was the Blue Mountain hike. And so we are seeing a positive change there. This year's calendar includes rabies vaccination clinics, to be determined. That event is usually managed by the city. We have the Walk on Blue Mountains also managed by the city that occurred on March 7th. We had an American Red Cross Blood Drive on April 6th. We have a community day cleanup for painting walls and picking up trash and, and planting trees on April 24th. The state of the city is to be determined. The art show is scheduled to be canceled. And I want to do that very quickly. I'll talk about the art show, community day, and country fair and the city birthday. So those events are put on by our Historical Cultural Committee, except for community day. And that committee has indicated that they do want to cancel those events. They're going to have a meeting on the 19th. They're going to have a meeting on the 19th of April. The Community Day event, we are just unable to plan that because of just now coming out of COVID-19, so we are not going to be able to have that event from a planning perspective. We do have a scheduled household hazardous waste collection event on May 22nd. Then we have the bulky item pickup, that's to be determined. That's where the residents can bring in their bulky items like mattresses and couches and things of that particular nature. We are planning on doing some kind of summer recreational activity program, that's to be determined. Movies in the park, to be determined. Halloween trunk or treat scheduled, obviously on Halloween, October 31st. And then we have the Veterans Day event, which the foundation puts on, the Veterans Wall of Freedom puts on that event along with the Memorial Day event. We provide some assistance, but they usually manage those events. And then we have Light Up Grand Terrace. That was the only other event that we had last year that we modified by simply having a much scaled-down version of our ceremony. And for those who don't know, the Light Up Grand Terrace is one of our most popular events. It can range up to 1,500 to 900 people at that activity. Added to this list is on 2021 Senior Class Parade, tentatively scheduled for May the 20th, the council decides to add it to this particular list. The city was approached by the parents of the class of 2021. As most of you all are aware, this is the senior year, and usually in the senior year is one of the most rewarding times in high school. This class of 2021 has not had a single day on campus. And so the parents have come together over the last year by coming together and doing various activities. The parents came to us earlier in the year, and the city sponsored a hike on Blue Mountain. And so they were able to use the city's Community Benefits Program for that. And what happens with that, because this is not a organized charity or a nonprofit, the parents, either if they do it themselves, have to assume the risk and the liability. So they found the nonprofit to do it for them last time. And so the parents, as most of the council knows, that last year, there was at least three different events that occurred in the city without people going to the proper permits. The class of 2020 did an impromptu parade throughout the city. The class of 2021, the parents would like to come to the city and do all the proper procedures in order to get the permits. And so normally, the City Council would direct them to the Community Benefits Program, and the city spent over 50, probably almost $100,000 in providing community benefit grants for the last five years. So in this particular case, the class of 2021's parents would like to have the city sponsor a 2021 parade for the high class of 2021. We do have a number of parents here tonight to talk to us about what their desires are, without them available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Does the council have questions of staff at this time? All right, no questions. So we will open it up to public comment. Do we have requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Mary Beth Carrera.
Hi. Good evening. We're here as parents. We're trying to get this parade together. It's our kids. These two haven't been, this, Josiah, Anthony, Sean, Marina, haven't been on campus since last year. These are children that are at school all day long, every day, and we're just trying to salvage something for them. The parade is, we weren't involved in the parade last year. As a community member, I did go watch it, and to see those smiles and those faces light up, it was amazing. And we really just want to come to you and ask for whatever help we can get with that, to do it the right way, to get the permits, whatever we need to do, and do it for these kids.
If I get, if I get.
And we have plenty of parent volunteers. We do, as the, as the events we have done, from beginning to end, we're there. We don't leave till everybody's gone, everything's cleaned up, there's not one thing left. We, we kind of monitor the kids. We have a great group of kids, great group of kids that have shown up for our events. So we feel pretty confident in that.
If I could interject, my name's Mario Sanchez, also a community member since 1979. And I think that the thing that sort of embodies what Grand Terrace is about is, you know, while geographically we can't grow, which is a good thing, but we have always been a very strong community. And I think it's been more prevalent or demonstrative this year than any other year. We have hundreds of parents that have been involved in our parent-coordinated group that is trying to do activities that are, you know, sanctioned, not so much sanctioned by the school, but appropriate with the appropriate liability indemnity insurances and special events permit with the support of Grand Terrace, we're able to do the hike. But I just wanted to, more than anything, focus on, well, express my sincere appreciation for the city's ongoing support, I mean, and the parents as well. I didn't prepare anything, but I wanted to share just because I think it's important to know that there's been a consistent amount of support, and we are appreciative. And so we wanted to at least end the year for the students. If it's not a school sanctioned event, it would be a city-supported event that we could celebrate because the city has been so supportive, and we're so appreciative of the community of parents and students and just everybody that has shown support, whether it's donations or just, you know, time and donate. I mean, it's just been incredible, and it just really is what Grand Terrace is about. And so, yeah, I thank you so much for even giving us the opportunity to present the senior parade.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mrs. Carrera. And I see, I see another person who wants to come forward, but.
Just jump in. One of the things that I just want to make sure that you're aware of, even if the high school has a commencement ceremony for the kids this year, it's going to be extremely reduced, either a drive-through with only a couple of parents, or if they do something out of facility, it's just going to be a couple of parents. So there's going to be a limited amount of people that get a share in this class's graduation ceremony. And by allowing a parade, it would allow friends, family, extended families to gather on the streets and congratulate these kids that have worked so hard and lost an incredible amount this year.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. And so I appreciate that you're all here and you want to do it the right way, although you did not listen when I asked you to each fill out a form when you were going to speak. But I appreciate your enthusiasm. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time? Thank you all for coming out and expressing your enthusiasm for this project. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and deliberation. Councilmember Allen.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, because I want to talk about it. So I'll make the motion to, let's see, where's the recommendation? What did we?
Approve inclusion of, or it's a receive and file of the 2021 community events, and approve inclusion of Class of 2021 Parade as a one-time city-sponsored event.
Right, that recommendation. I'll move that because I want to talk about it.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. And Councilmember Allen, you had comments?
On page 113 of this staff report, it says that the staff determined cost to be 3,000 after insurance and sheriff's costs, but then the last paragraph says, under fiscal impact, states the city estimates overall cost to sponsor and support to be 14,000. So I want to, I was just wondering about that $11,000 difference, you know?
So that $14,000, sir, represents all of the events that are on the calendar, not just the event for the 2021 parade?
Oh, I see, okay. So, so then the 3,000 is the parade, the cost to support the parade?
Yes.
And that's for insurance and sheriff's patrol?
Yes, that's a general estimate, yes.
Okay. I was hoping I could ask the parents that presented one question also, if any of them cared to answer, and it was going to be, how much money has been raised by other means, like through fundraising events like car washes or bake sales, personal contributions from maybe booster clubs or businesses and/or family members?
With COVID, there's only so much that we can do, but we have had, we have reached out to parents, and parents have donated money, time, supplies, anything we can do. It's, it's, with COVID, we are hard, we can't go to boosters, we can't do things, we have to do things on our own, and.
Yeah, just to be more specific, we did attempt to do, to do a GoFundMe account, and we were able to, we were able to receive $1,940. However, we've also done a myriad of activities, and I don't have the Excel sheet in front of me, but we're, what's the negative? We're in the, we're in the red. I mean, we've pretty much come out of pocket for every entire expense. Just to give you an idea, we're, we're attempting to host a parent-funded prom event that's in an outdoor facility, just kind of give you an idea, and it's over $24,000. And, you know, we're trying to raise money to do that, that's in a following CDC guidelines and outdoor, but it gives you an idea of, you know, we don't have a plethora of funds coming in, and so, but with that being said, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth, but I think that we would be willing to help the city in offsetting the cost to insurance just to make it happen. I mean, I, you know, don't think that any one of us have planned, but we would do anything to make sure that this parade happened, even if it were to give the, even if it were to give the city a donation partially, you know, I'm open to that as well.
Well, I wasn't going down that path, but I was just, I was just wondering what efforts had been put in for others. And I applaud your, the efforts that you're after, going for right now, and well done on that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
You know, just, this is a quick thing, you know, thank you for doing this for the seniors. I know that you're children too, but you're also taking care of other kids that don't have it, you know. Our kids, my kids grew up through the Colton Joint Unified School System, but, you know, for you, you kids, you know, I know it's, it's a hard year for this, you know, the memories and stuff, you know. I was looking forward to this year, football and soccer, I mean, all these things going on, it was, you know, but just driving over here today, seeing somewhat, you know, lifestyle's coming back, you know, dad's out there throwing balls at our kids and getting ready for baseball season and stuff, you know. But, you know, you guys, you know, you're my prayers, and I, my heart goes out for you, you know, I just, I was devastated when I heard the news too, so, but, you know, you guys are positive role models for your kids, so I love that. And, you know, you guys, athletes, students, you know, you just keep moving forward, you know, life's throwing all kinds of stuff at you, and this is one door that's closed but another one open. Just, you know, maintain a positive attitude and just keep going forward, and good group of parents supporting you and stuff, and, yeah, let us know with the city, you know, if it goes through, you know, if we could do anything else, you know, because you guys are Grand Terrace, you know, these students are the future. One of these students might be up here one day, you know, so I just, I'm happy to see this parade. And one thing they do, just a recommendation is, if it goes through, is the car club that meets with John Gallow, I mean, they'll be happy to cruise the streets with you, they want to cruise all the time anyway, you know, love to have the kids probably with them. So there's other avenues and stuff that'll help out and other people, but, you know, thanks again for coming up and trying, you know, trying to salvage the year for them and make some kind of memories for them, you know, and everything counts. And I know it's a good thing on the Blue Mountain Walk and stuff, but thanks again, and, you know, God bless all of you guys. Thank you.
Any further deliberation at this point? I think that we probably haven't done a lot with our Community Benefits Fund this year. So with that statement, I will ask the city clerk to call the vote, please.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
And Mayor Magna Bo.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to hearing more about when you'll be out there so that the community can be involved in cheering the seniors on. All right, we'll move to item number eight, which is approval of professional services agreements for interim finance director and administrative services with Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott LLP, with a not-to-exceed amount of $127,500. This staff report supports goal number one, to ensure our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. As the council was aware, this Assistant City Manager slash Finance Director has left the city as of last week, and so for an interim basis, we'd like to hire this company to fill our financial needs. We anticipate that the recruitment for a new Finance Director slash City Manager should be complete in July, by July 2021. This contract is for a flat monthly rate. That means no matter the hours that they're going to be working, they will work beyond the 20, the 30-hour minimum. There's still, the charge to the city would still be $15,000. In getting the services for the Finance Director, we're also getting actually the services for the entire company to provide the financial and administrative support that we need. We did go out and solicit three requests, three quotes from three different firms, and selected Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott. The staff is recommending that the City Council approve their professional service agreement as attached with Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott to provide interim financial director and administrative services. With that, I'm available for any questions the council might have. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Questions at this time? All right, no questions? Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and deliberation.
I'll move the recommendation to approve a professional services agreement for interim Finance Director and Administrative Services with Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott LLP, not to exceed 127,500, and two, authorize the mayor to execute the professional services agreement subject to city attorney's approval as to form.
Councilman Wilson, seconds.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Wilson. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move to item nine, which is professional services agreement with Michael Baker International for environmental and planning services related to the Barton Road specific plan and Town Center master plan in an amount not to exceed 120,145. And we have Steve Weiss, Planning and Development Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor Magna Bo and council members. As you indicated, this is an award contract to Michael Baker International for updating the Barton Road specific plan. So regarding, regarding the vision, it's goal three, and it's to promote economic development by updating zoning and development codes to support business attraction and business So some focus here, the Barton Road specific plan, or the BRSP, that's the acronym, has been in effect since 1990. While Barton Road corridor has experienced improved development, implementation of the plan could be improved through strategic updates to better facilitate development needs of the city in 2021 and beyond. The focus of this, these updates actually to Barton Road is to establish a policy environment promoting infill and comprehensive development of the Barton Road corridor with locally serving businesses, amenities, and also urban living opportunities while eliminating the continual need for variances to accommodate modern development standards by maximizing the use of underutilized parcels with outdated, overabundant parking criteria. So to the contrast. serving businesses, amenities and also urban living opportunities while eliminating the continual need for variances to accommodate modern development standards by maximizing the use of underutilized parcels with outdated, overabundant parking criteria. So, to the contractor pursuant to an on-call planning and environmental services agreement dated back in 2019, city staff has engaged a consultant, which is Michael Baker International or MBI, to assist with and carry out preliminary work relating to the, the specific plan update under staff's direction. The specific plan update is underway and is in draft form with public hearings commencing in 2021. MBI has reviewed the development plans against the goals and objectives from the specific plan and staff has directed them to update it by, for the, the need to create a modern land use design, remove obstacles that could impede development, our modern development, and also update obsolete environmental documentation going back to nineteen ninety. So, onto the contract. MBI was hired to provide on-call planning and environmental services for the city and developer-initiated projects. In this case, this request is for a city initiated. They were retained for environmental and planning services, project management support also for the Greens Group mixed-use project, which as you know is a very futuristic project. And by doing this, they have a thorough understanding of what is needed for this project to become a reality. So, let's talk about the vision. The policy direction for the specific plan update is to establish the framework for feasible development that provides an urban core of services and amenities while appreciating the change in trends around parking and land use. Although the specific plan is an age document with some antiquated land use rules, for example, deep setbacks and extreme height restrictions that are inconsistent with modern-day land use practices, it also in, has included development tools to encourage the consolidation of long narrow lots that adorn the specific planning areas. The specific plan also offers bonus densities for developers that take certain actions and includes affordable housing overlay for, also for workforce housing. Regarding circulation and parking, the reason adoption, the recent adoption of the vehicle miles traveled or VMT ordinance and also the traffic impact analysis that the council did adopt with local screening tables needs to also be evaluated and applied to the specific plan. The application of the VMT will have significant impacts on parking demand and will act as the broader circulation study for all future development along Barton Road and the corridor. The update of the specific plan will also allow MBI to apply the council's Barton Road landscaping enhancing standards that we have an additional grant with and undergrounding of the remaining power lines along Barton Road. So on to the environmental. The update of the Barton Road specific plan will also update the environmental studies and eliminate or fold also the town center master plan requirement into the Barton Road specific plan since they integrate functionality. The update of the specific plan will modernize the development standards for the city's commercial corridor and allow for uniform and streamlined process for all future environmental along Barton Road, which namely eliminates the repetitiveness of environmental review for every project that comes in. So, part of this, part of this is there's a competitive bidding exception tied to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code for bidding on projects. In this case, it's unusual. Staff is recommending that the city council waive the competitive bidding requirements that's contained in chapter three of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code pursuant to the provisions of the chapter, which may be dispensed when contracts, which by their nature do not lend themselves to competitive bidding, as the council can make that determination and document that it will result in a cost savings greater than which going through a full-on competitive process. And also, Michael Baker has had a, has had an extensive history and knowledge and is extremely familiar with the proposed plan amendments along Barton Road corridor and has carried out the preliminary work for the proposed plan amendments and consequently they would not need to be re-familiar, or familiarized with the needs of the city. There to, they would not need to reassess and reanalyze work that has already been occurred, so asking the council to consider this. So, on to the recommendation. The recommendation updates to the plan would better enable the city to attract quality development by reducing barriers to entitlement, also allowing the use of land to be used more efficiently and promote economic feasibility while, while encouraging a mixed-use development. Staff therefore recommends that the city council waive also the competitive bidding requirement as I discussed of the, of chapter three of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and improve the professional services agreement with Michael Baker in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, which would be to complete the specific plan and also do the environmental review and authorize the mayor to execute the professional services agreement with Michael Baker subject to city attorney approval as to form. That does conclude staff presentation and I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson.
Mr. Weiss, I think this is a great step forward. As we know, we have a fuse that we're kind of backing into and that is the Greens Group project. I don't want to hold up things, but all, all I'm really concerned about, I think we have the environmental covered pretty well in this agreement. I think it updates where it needs to update. What I'm concerned about is the design guidelines. Do you know if we have gone through these design guidelines and, and kind of remanufactured them for the fact that, you know, we've got a changing frontage scheme? You know, back in nineteen ninety, it was a hundred years ago. It was a whole different world. And so now we've got, you know, fifty percent of the people are ordering out of their homes and, and, you know, a lot of big storefront operations are going BK. And I'm wondering whether or not some of these, for example, on package, let's see, yeah, packet page two twenty-eight and on, I think that's right. I see some things that would have been preferable at a time when we were looking for a kind of a craftsman-style thing that would match some of the stuff that we've got over there where Woody's is. And then I wonder at that and think about what's going to be across the street at Greens Group, at least in the last pass, then we look at what's next to it, which is the bank and the, you know, all of those things start looking like a quilt. And not in a good way. So I'm a little concerned about how that works. I have no problem approving this agreement if we feel as if we have an energized approach towards this that we can be proactive in. And I know that the planning commission is going to be charged to, to some extent in relation to that, but whatever we feed it to them is going to be kind of where they go. And so I'm looking to you and your staff and however, however many consultants we have to get involved to make sure that we stick to not only the discouragement items on two twenty-nine, natural unfinished concrete, stucco, corrugated metal, reflective glass, we're not Orange County, and we're not in the sixties either for that matter, but we've got another evolution we're looking at here. And I'm really, I'm really concerned that our special area is going to turn into something that probably should have been in place twenty years ago. And then, you know, we're going to be behind the dime. I think it's cute when you go through San Dimas and those areas, they have theme park type things. That's great. We're not doing that really, I don't think. So, I guess I'm, I just want to make sure that as, as it goes through the pipe, we can adjust and keep in mind the fact that we, we are fighting a totally new market. So, I don't know how we accomplish that.
So your question is how are you going to handle that, Director Weiss?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Wilson. I truly do appreciate your comments, very thoughtful. I can tell you that we have exhaustively critiqued the specific plan and the public process will definitely be part of this too. When I say there are antiquated parts of this, there are areas that are, it's a hindrance to develop along the corridor. You know, some of your examples were good examples, where the intent is to activate the corridor, to get people to shop along the corridor, to get quality business along the corridor, and that's where we are. And that's, and the only way to do it is to take a, a modern approach to this. No, we're not going to look like anything but Grand Terrace, Barton Road, and it's, it's all gonna, it's all gonna tie in together nicely. The land plan does not change, only that the, the, the bland plan will bring, will come a little bit more to the street, it'll provide a lot more activity and excitement for people to, to support this area and, and it takes the planning commission and the council's input as part of this process and also, you know, the Barton Road landscape plan will be incorporated into this too.
Madam Mayor, also might, might also direct staff towards the intention, I remember, and I've had this conversation with the city manager, so he's aware of it, back a hundred years ago when we did the, some of the specific plan revan, or general plan revamp, we were trying to do something really out of the box. And at that time, we found it was more imaginative to allow the developers to do interpretation on things and there was a new scheme going on at the time where you would get photographs. And so that's what we did in, you know, some of the housing element items and that. So if anything, we reverse engineered the general plan in anticipation of what would ha, happen in another twenty years. And so that might be a good key. Because we actually use photographs rather than little integral drawings and massing and all the architectural junk that they usually put in these things so that the people could look at it and go, oh, I think I see what, where they're going with this. And it looks like it's, you know, some of the people that have responded to some of that in the last, you know, say ten years or so have paid attention. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Further questions? Councilmember Robles.
Yes, I'm happy for the questions that my peer brings up because reading this, I was also wondering, and maybe, I'm wondering how in this contract, we address the aesthetics of, because we had a Cape Cod theme and that didn't work out, so then, you know, we ended up with stucco. So, so I'm just kind of curious, what, what are we looking for here? We're going to go through a hearing process, we're going to go through the planning commission? How are we going to get a new theme?
I can't, I can't say exactly because it has to go through the hearing process, but I like to use the term reimage. I think reimagining is, is very common that you see. You see centers that, you know, are challenged, maybe, you know, need, need some help around, I think Councilmember Wilson was talking about the stucco and the wood and all this. It will, it will be something that will reimage the corridor that will give it a traditional but also a modern theme, and that's really what the goal of this is, as well as, as well as the Barton Road landscape plan that will also be before the council. They'll see, they'll see the, the street furniture, the parkways, you know, the utility undergrounding, everything that's going to make this a much cleaner design that will also bring more activity to the street.
The other question I have as far as existing buildings, they're grandfathered in, right? So there's nothing that we can do other than, are we looking at any incentives, maybe looking at economic development funds to do a facade theme, up incentive program to kind of bring up the city to a, a better standard, aesthetics?
Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, well certainly, the, the process you're going to have here is that this document is going to go off and we're going to make sure that the consultant hears these comments. We've also talked about the, the work that you've already completed in terms of the enhancement plan for Barton Road. And if you note in this document on, on packet page two twenty-eight, and one of the planners pointed this out to me, was that these were desirable elements, these were not required, but they were desirable elements. And so the comments that we've talked, we've talked about today, those will need to be desirable elements, but also allow for the developer, as it was indicated earlier, to come up and, and give us the latest and the greatest concepts. Now, there are two things that are going to happen here, that once the developer completes this plan and it's coming back to the planning commission and it's coming back to the city council. And so there's two opportunities for us, if we don't get it right the first time, to be able to make some adjustments, get it right the second time. But the, but the whole purpose of this document is to bring it up to date, to reduce repetitiveness in terms of having a consultant do a traffic plan, having a developer do a traffic plan for each particular time they do development. And the goal here is to incorporate all of what you've talked about into a functioning document that is going to be, as Steve indicated, create some vibrancy on, on, on the area and also look at the latest and greatest techniques that the planners have. So I think this is going to be the document that's going to give you everything we've talked about over the last five years.
And so incentives to existing buildings would come as part of a separate process after this document is done?
Absolutely, but it, and it's certainly something that we need to keep in mind because as indicated, as we move forward with these new concepts, some of our existing buildings may appear to be dated and we can have, we do have some bond proceed money that we might be able to, to, to offer up as an, as an incentive to, to do just that.
Because I see here, you know, we're talking about on page two thirty-one, dominant building color, you know, so it's kind of seems, the nineteen ninety specific plan, I did spend a lot of time on that and that's when I noticed that we had trees and then trees disappeared because they didn't seem to grow. But, you know, it just seems like we're giving this person a lot of latitude without much input, where, you know, I would think some of these things, there should be kind of some kind of in, input from us, you know, saying for, you know, look at the colors of the city, you know, incorporate the blues maybe as a, you know, as some, something in the, in the schematic. Cape Cod didn't seem to work out because, you know, it doesn't, wears out, just like I found out in my home, you know, I had to spend a lot of money putting a new veneer. So it just seems like a lot is going to this person to decide without too much of our input.
Well, what they'll be doing is they'll be developing the document, it'll come back in, in draft form and we'll make sure that, that we, we accept, we get your comments from tonight and have them kind of address this issue. But, but remember, yours, we want to establish sort of the framework and then every project that comes forward is going to be going through a design review. So if we set the standards in this document, there's also a number of opportunities for the planning commission to ensure that there is a right fit as we move forward with projects.
Maybe if you step through the process that this consultant will follow with respect to updating this document, will they sit in a room by themselves and update it and say this is what we think should, should, you should do in the city of Grand Terrace? Or what will they do?
This has been an iterative process. We, we are working hand in hand.
Okay, but what, what's the process? Is there a, is there a set step by step that you can go through or no?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr.
Community, community meetings, planning commission input, then it comes back to council, that's, that's what I'm looking for. What's the process?
And so the process is going to be, the consultant is going to update the document, give it to staff to review, then staff's going to take it to the planning commission, have a public hearing at the planning commission, have them approve the document, then this document is going to come over to the, to the city council for approval. Now, what we can do is we can also talk with the consultant to put some steps in to actually look at the feedback in terms of what, you know, from, we attach this document and so there's some concerns about making sure that the document moves forward in terms of the elevation. And so we can express, express that to the, to the consultant and come back with a document that, that kind of addresses those particular issues.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything that Mr. Duffy said. I, in my experience, what, what other cities have done is have a community meeting at the outset to kind of get feedback from the community as to what their expectations are, what their thoughts are. The other step then is to bring it before the planning commission and city council as a joint meeting. It's more just a general workshop-type meeting just to have like feedback. It's more just a general workshop-type meeting, just to have like feedback, get direction as to, you know, as you were saying earlier, Cape Cod versus Western-style versus whatever, but getting that direction early from the council and planning commission. And then it goes to the consultant to draft it up with that mindset. So that's something I would suggest, so that it doesn't go through the process and then it comes to the council, and the council's like, this is not what we wanted.
Western Cape Cod.
Yeah.
Okay, further questions? All right. Thank you. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and come back to council for consideration of a motion and further deliberation.
Motion approval, as presented.
Seconded.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Wilson and a second by Councilmember Allen.
I'd like to make an alternate motion.
Okay. Councilmember Robles?
I'd like to approve this with the amendment of a joint workshop between the planning commission and the city council to do some rainstorming on some design themes and color elements.
So I would withdraw my second from Mayor or from Councilmember Wilson and put my second behind Councilmember Robles.
Okay. All right. Any further deliberation? All right, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
And Mayor McNabb.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to requests for future agenda items by city council. We have two tonight. The first one is a policy on banning political signs, flyers, et cetera, in city parks and other city-owned facilities during election period. Councilmember Robles?
Yes, this wouldn't have anything to do with a person's free speech, having to do with them taking, you know, the appropriate measures to have the park for their own personal things. This would be anything that city-sponsored or city has any involvement in. And I would probably recommend that this and this other item probably would be best served by an ad hoc committee with some staff support.
Okay, so motion for item number one.
So I move, I kind of need to get back to the agenda. I lost it when I was going through. Okay, so I move a, the recommendation on policy on banning political signs, flyers, et cetera, in city parks and other city-owned facilities during election period.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Allen?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm behind the time here. I've lost track. I'm, I thought the next item up was the government claim for Sunny Days, so where did I lose track?
We're on request for future agenda items.
Okay.
And we're on number one, so it's item H, so we're not at closed session yet.
Okay. Going back up, hold on. Okay, it's already seconded at this point?
Yes, and Councilmember, we're calling the role Councilmember Allen, who has voted no.
Well, let me ask you this. Is it possible for us to have some comment on this item? This is the one about banning political signs?
This is whether it's coming back to have a discussion.
Okay. I thought we already have that on the books. In fact, my understanding is, is the state law says that you can't put political signs, flyers in city parks and other city-owned facilities, as well as public ways. And you also can't put them on utility poles and other things. So I think that's state-covered. So I think we're already there. I think we've already accomplished it, fortunately.
So, no, you don't want it to come back?
No, I don't see any point in it, because I think it's there.
Okay. And Councilmember Robles?
Probably doesn't need to come back, it just needs to be implemented. We had a Halloween haunt with people, political signs there. We never, you know, there's a lot of issues with that Halloween haunt, as far as it never came to the council for approval, and we had political signs there. So it probably needs to be something that needs to be in our ethics thing and reemphasized, but it doesn't need to come back. So I would agree with you.
Okay, so you're going to withdraw that one?
Yes.
Okay. So item number two is a policy on filling unexpired vacancies on city council with next candidate highest vote count if vacancy occurs within one year of last election. Councilmember Robles?
Yes, there's just been a number of cities that are moving this direction. My experience with this council is that the council voted no on a lot of folks to fill a vacancy, and they were either the next highest vote getter, or they won the next election anyways. So I think this is something that probably, you know, an ad hoc committee could be best to, to look at that and bring it back and see if this is something we want to implement.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Before I vote, is, there's no, this is to discuss it? There's no discussion now?
It's to bring it back.
Right.
Okay. No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor McNabb?
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
All right, thank you. And so we will move on to city council communications. We will begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
I don't have anything to report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Doug Wills?
I enjoyed our opportunity to gather together for our farewell for a couple of employees that are moving on to other and hopefully bright horizons, and really appreciated the time that was spent by staff to make sure that that took place. I think it's something that we definitely have to pay attention to, because I remember in my hundreds of years working in construction, that I was really bowled over when a fellow that I worked for for about six years turned around and not only gave me a bonus, but took us down to the Newport Fashion Hour, anyway, Newport Bay Beach Club. And it was a big shindig. And so it really makes you, really makes you think, you know, back in the old days, people used to give gold watches and all those kinds of things, but now we seem to shuffle in and out of places, and nobody even knows you're there, and people pick up boxes and they walk out the door and they're escorted. In Orange County, of course, but I think it was, I applaud the effort, so. And that's all I've got for this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey?
Yes, I piggyback on what Councilmember Wilson said, you know, it's a nice little farewell, you know, we're going to miss those staff. I just have one question, anybody win that lottery?
I did check my tickets, I didn't win.
I was just wondering if we had another employee leave or something, one of ones. We're all here, okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hussey. I will save my comments till next meeting. City manager communications?
Yes, Mayor, I actually have only one particular item, is that on April 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., we'll have a Keep Grand Terrace Beautiful volunteer pick-up, paint, and celebrate Earth Day. We'll be picking up trash throughout the city on the 24th. We'll be also painting some of the retaining walls on some of the major thoroughfares. And then there'll be some education classes at Fitness Park. There will also be lunch provided by Woody's, sack lunch, for those participants, those volunteers. And you can go to the tiny URL, or you can click on the scan-me little box there, the QR code, and you can be routed to a person who will help you sign up for the different events there for the day. And so we expect that to be a very exciting event, and I have to say that unlike the previous time, there are not going to be any ladybugs, and people were disappointed about that, but we're concerned about having to share, get those out, those 36,000 bugs out in the proximity to have to share those. So no ladybugs this year.
What happened to the ladybugs from last time?
They're probably still there, maybe.
Then you probably don't need them. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. All right, we do have closed session tonight, so we will be recessing to closed session for three items. The first is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, Adrian Arguera, city attorney, Colin Tanner, deputy city attorney, employee organization Teamsters Local 1932. Unrepresented employees include city manager, assistant city manager, city clerk, director of public works, director of planning and development services, management analyst, of which there are two positions, principal accountant and assistant planner. Our second item will be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9CD2E3. Would you like me to read the whole paragraph, Mr. City Attorney?
I don't think that's necessary. I think if, if I could just quickly summarize it?
Certainly.
So this involves the claim filed by Sunny Days LLC regarding an alleged allegation that the city improperly rescinded, terminated a business license for a wholesale business at the property located at 21600 Walnut Avenue. And the claim seeks damages in the excess of $25,000, and the claim and claim rejection letter is included in the agenda package.
All right, thank you so much. And our third item is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957.6, title city manager. So at this time, we will be recessing to closed session. For those of you that will not be here when we come back, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. And any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess. All right, we will reconvene to open session. The council met in closed session to address three items. The first one, our conference with labor negotiators. We had no reportable action. We did give direction to staff. On item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, we had no reportable actions, but we did give direction to staff. And on item three, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager, again, direction to staff and no reportable actions. So at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all for your attention and your attendance. We are adjourned.